Like to call the meeting to order, Town of Southbridge Joint General Government Subcommittee/Town Council Meeting, Wednesday, February twenty first, two thousand and twenty four, at six P M in the Veterans Room. Just so you know, this is being recorded by audio and video. Uh, agenda item number one is called to order, agenda number two, roll call, Councilor Marchetti.
Present.
Councilor Dow.
Present.
Citizen Member Kelly.
Present.
And Citizen Member Clemens is excused, and Councilor Montigny is present. We have a quorum, four members. Um, agenda item number three is review and discuss authorizing the town to submit and accept a grant from the Massachusetts Department of Transportation for the replacement of security fence and gates at the Southbridge Municipal Airport. Allow the town manager to sign all related documents. Entertain a motion to vote to recommend Town Council approve submission and acceptance.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second. Mister Town Manager.
I do know Rick Clemens is in the building, but I know he was at his own Board of Appeals meeting as well, so he's done that. So, uh, he contacted, uh, I mean, Mass Department of Transportation has some additional monies. There you go.
We just did the, just started the idea.
So, uh, Mass Department of Transportation had money left, uh, or available, and this was a project to replace, uh, the remainder of the fence around the airport. Um, it'll be a hundred percent funded by Mass D O T, no cost to the Town of Southbridge. Um, so if you have any other questions, Rick is here for that.
Do you have anything else you'd like to add, or?
Well, we had, we got some new fence when we did the runway project, and this will be seven thousand two hundred and fifty feet more of new fencing.
Wow.
Eight foot tall fencing that'll go around the rest of the, completely have brand new fencing around the whole airport when this project is done.
That's great. Uh, Mister Councilor Marchetti.
Thank you, Mister Chairman Threu. I didn't see any dollar amount on the grant.
Uh, yeah, Rick did send it to me, uh, we can add it to the agenda item for the council meeting. It's approximately one hundred and sixty seven thousand fifty two dollars.
That's, that's for the, that's, that's for the engineering.
For the engineering.
And the fence project will go, it'll be approximately a million dollar project by town is completed.
So this is for engineering. The fence will also be covered by the grant?
Yes, a hundred percent.
Oh, that's good.
So, we did the, uh, we.
So that was a hundred and sixty thousand?
Hundred and sixty seven oh fifty two, which would be, uh, designed, bid and oversight, project oversight.
Hundred and sixty seven oh fifty two.
All right.
And approximately eight hundred thousand for the fence.
Eight hundred. Fantastic. You all set?
Thank you.
Anybody else, Councilor Dow?
Thank, thank you, thank you.
Nice fence.
Do you have any engineer for fence to put it up?
It's federal grant, uh, federal grants, they, they have to put the, the engineering documents, put together all the specifications for the fence, how it has to be put up, you know, they, they dig out along the fence. The whole fence line, take the whole fence out, dig along the fence line, they fill it with stone, so they keep the weeds away, then they specify how to dig it. And so, uh, we use the engine, Stantec Engineering for our projects at the airport, so that gets, you know, they come in, and the Mass D O T and F A A, you know, need those engineering documents before that goes out to be. So the same thing you do with a road here in the town, here at the higher engineering company, or somebody to design it, do all the documents. That's what, that's what they're doing as well, so.
Anybody else? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, agenda number four is review and discuss the confirmation of the town manager's appointment of Robert Paul Selly to the Airport Commission, effective immediately until June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty four. Pending state ethics in good standing, entertain a motion to vote to recommend to Town Council for confirmation. Move on.
So I know you probably have his resume, he is not here this evening, he is a teacher that teaches robotics at Killenley High School, and they are in a competition on state or country, they win international awards, he's pretty, pretty good at what he does, so they have a school. I did, uh, I tell him about the meeting, but I apologize for not being here. I personally know Doctor Pesselli, he used to do work for us at the school, he did some technology work for us at the school. He's had an airplane at the airport for a long time. Um, he recently moved to Southbridge up on Pleasant Street, bought the house, the last house, what Steve Gregwell's house, if you know, right adjacent to the airport, um, so he's moving to town. Um, I thought he'd be a good fit, and I mentioned to him that there would be an opening, I did mention it to Rick, Rick knows him as well, I believe, so.
That's great. Um, Mister Manager, why is it say till June two thousand and twenty four?
Uh, that is John Brackett's unexpired term.
Okay.
So, because he's replacing John Brackett, so we would just reappoint him, so that we can keep within the, I had to explain that to, uh, Doctor Pesselli, that, you know, it's till twenty four, but then we put him in for appointments, just to keep the term stagnant as we're supposed to do.
Yeah, absolutely. Anybody have any questions?
No, it sounds like a good, uh, fit.
I agree, what do you think?
I definitely agree, and he actually moved to Southbridge because of the airport, so, you know, once I'm in the airport, I mean, he'd been looking for a house for the last two or three years, and, uh, he even, he even, he even looked at that house a couple times, and the price was way high, and somehow he, you know, the prices came back down reasonable, and then they bought it, so I think it's a great fit.
That's that far to go, huh, just walk over.
Nope, he said he'd be a good caretaker to keep an eye on it, and.
He's got a nice plan up there.
That's a great, that's great.
Yeah, I mean, he does a lot of charity work too, with, what is it called, Angels or something like that, where they, uh,
Angel Flight.
Angel Flight, with kids that have medical issues and moving, maybe, so. Um, yeah, and then he owns property in town, as well as income property throughout town as well, so.
Fantastic.
Yeah, he's a great guy, so he'd be good addition.
Great seeing citizens step up like that. Um, well, if everybody is all set, then, uh, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. Um, thanks. Agenda number five is review and discuss the approval of changes in the job description for Town Agent for Solid Waste and Recyclable Material Collection, M S nineteen, entertain a motion to vote to recommend Town Council approve changes.
Second.
Great, second, it's a great, great.
Mister Manager.
Okay, so the next two items have to do with the change for the curbside collection. As you know, through the Enterprise Fund presentations, we said we were gonna have a full-time agent that's gonna work with Town Manager the program on a day-to-day basis, and then the inspectors that are gonna be out on the road doing this. These two job descriptions, we took the existing job descriptions, uh, Maritza, who's here this evening, Anna, and Nora worked throughout the job descriptions, make sure that they match with what we're planning to do with the curbside enterprise or the curbside recycling program. So, this is the job descriptions that, uh, we're asking to be approved.
Fantastic. Uh, Councilor Marchetti.
Thank you, Mister Chairman Threu. So this is more of a changing the job title, correct?
The title is pretty much the same, but there were some additional changes within the, uh, essential functions to make sure that it matched, uh, the additional duties for the curbside program as well.
Well, the title in the schedule is solid waste, Town Agent for Solid Waste slash Landfill Monitor. You're changing it to Town Agent for Solid Waste and Recyclable Material Collection.
Yeah, which they do, the, the, uh, curbside collection is recyclables as well, and they do manage the recycle, do that program.
But it's not a landfill monitor anymore, so it's kind of changing, you're changing the whole job to a different type of job, that's all I'm saying. Same pri, uh, same.
Same job description, oh, well, same, same level, yeah, I mean, it's, it's still a lot of responsibility, they're gonna be managing three employees and the day-to-day business of the, running this program, so. It's quite involved, I mean, there's a lot of management to this program, so. Um, but there is gonna be some landfill duties as well, as far as the report into D E P, so some of those requirements is still, we still are big enough for the town, have to do that through the Board of Health. So we have to make sure that we have somebody that's familiar with that as well.
So this is basically replacing Anna Smith, would you say?
Yes. Yeah, Anna's all done, she's retired.
But her salary was one hundred percent paid by Casella. So how, my, my question is, how are we going to fund this position? I know it's in the schedule, but I didn't see it in the budget.
It's in the curbside enterprise fund that you adopted, the management.
So it's gonna come out of the curbside.
Yeah, this position was presented at the curbside enterprise fund.
But I mean, the, the funding for that won't be coming in for a while, so are you planning on funding it out of the general fund until the money starts coming in, or?
Yeah, that was a presentation that I made at council, that we have to take that bulk of money, which included the person, the personnel for this position.
I'm, I'm getting old, so I forget.
Yeah, no, it was, that was the whole presentation when we said we had to adopt the, the fund, and we had to transfer money from the general fund for the remainder of this fiscal year. And then, the, the whole conversation said, once we start billing, it was gonna go back to the general fund for this year until the enterprise fund kicks in in July one.
But I mean, and I know this is a little off topic, but you are losing a lot of funds from Casella. You're losing funds from Anna's salary, Edgar's salary, part of Daniel's salary.
Yeah, this is all coming out of the enterprise fund now.
So, no, are you taking that, those funds away from?
From what?
From like Daniel, what's his, like, he gets like eight thousand dollars.
That, that comes, that, that, those funded, there will be still some that are gonna be part of the contract oversight that Casella is responsible for, so there are some funds that they still have to, responsible to pay to the town because you're still in post-closure.
Okay.
So there'll be some of that funding coming in.
That's good to hear.
Uh, but then, so it's a coordination of it, but then, uh, if you remember the presentation that we made, it was indirect cost. Those indirect costs were portions of Daniel's salary, the assessor's salary, the accountant's salary, and all that.
All right, I'm good, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Councilor.
I don't know if I missed it, uh, while I was out there, the, this is gonna be fully funded come next year by the receipts, correct?
Correct.
Yep.
We hold that.
So are those positions gonna be unfunded in the Board of Health's position, or they can just real, reallocated?
Reallocated, okay.
Thank you.
I do know that, I'm sorry.
It's okay, Mister, uh, Councilor.
I do, I do, I just wanna say I did talk to Irene Compton from Mass D E P, and she said that certain things that are like funded within a department should be in their budgets, or such as the leaf, if it's being, if it's being run by D P W, then it should be in their budget. Hazardous waste, I don't know who's running that, is Health Department running that? Then it should be in their budget. I'm not saying where the money comes from, I'm just saying it should be recorded in their budget, that's what she said.
That's what she said. Well, we have a time to do it right this year.
We'll take, you know, I, I, I respect that, well, it would be no different, I think, than, um, um, yeah, no, I understand that, I, we'll take a look at that, whether, whether we just set up a whole new cost center, such as, no, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say it right now. If you look at the Water Enterprise Fund, that is a totally separate budget, that says, these are your regular receipts, this is your indirect cost, this is what your expenses are, and comes out of that enterprise fund, so I'm gonna say it's probably gonna come right out of that.
All right, thank you.
Uh, Councilor Lazo and Councilor Dow.
Are you saying that the job description belongs in the budget, not the finances? Because we have Mike Julian as a code enforcement officer of the Building Department, but his money comes from a grant. I, I'm not understanding.
No, I understand what he's saying, I, I, we talked about, I, I, I get where he's going, and we'll, we'll take a look, bec, I, I understand, so. When we build the, when we, we're working on the budget stuff now, so we'll talk with Dean and Michelle and figure out where it goes within the specific line.
I'm, I'm agreeing with what he's saying.
Yeah, no, I agree with that, yep.
It's a, it's a great point.
Thank you, Chair Threu. Uh, I wanna thank Melissa for, uh, you know, lying for the new position, uh, very well. She doing a great job for the town.
Yeah, we haven't done that at gender.
We're not, technically not there, but, you know.
Well, I mean, she did a great job on this, along with Nora's here this evening.
I'm gonna say thank you, so.
Yeah.
There you go. Let me get both now, okay. Uh, everybody all set?
Yeah.
On this, uh, first item for the job description, okay. All those in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. Uh, agenda number six is review, discuss approval of changes in the job description for Solid Waste Recycling Monitor S nine, entertain a motion to vote to recommend Town Council approve changes.
Subtle.
Just tell me.
Yeah, just like the other item, uh, we did not change the job classification, it's still an S nine, just as it was before. We just added some of the things for them, like the total maintenance that we may have them do, we may have them do some other supervision and all that stuff, so. Uh, it's just to make it consistent for the curbside collection.
Good. All right, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. Agenda number seven, review and discuss the confirmation of Town Manager's appointment of Maritza Santos as the Town Agent for Solid Waste and Recyclable Material Collection, M S nineteen, effective date, March eighteenth, two thousand and twenty four. Entertain a motion to vote to recommend to Town Council for confirmation.
Second.
All right, Mister Town Manager.
Thank you. I think throughout this process, when Anna announced that her retirement was, that I had tasked putting Maritza into this position because of her experience in the Health Inspections Department, uh, the fact that I was gonna need, uh, to have Anna transition all the knowledge that she has, the paperwork, um, all the institutional knowledge of the landfill, it just made sense to transition Maritza into this position. She has worked very hard, along with everybody in our team, to, on the, uh, uh, licensing permit and go, go, uh, open gov, uh, getting that stood up, working with Casella to get the materials available and out that are going out this week. Um, for the transition to this, she is the fit to this, so this, I see this as a promotion within the Health Department, 'cause this, uh, whole program still resides within the Health Department, so it's a promotion of that strong individual that has been with the town for a long time, that has the institutional knowledge to assume the role of this position.
Okay, um, so she'll be doing none of the health inspections and stuff, she's moving completely.
Strictly to this new role, and we will backfill, I've already talked to Dan about backfilling the Administrative Assistant Physician, uh, the Food Inspector, we have Daniel Fuentes, who's now there, and, uh, Daniel Wazet, Waziak, who's our Director of Public Health, is the Certified Food Inspector that would take on any food inspector while they continue to train Daniel on those tasks.
Fuentes, got it, okay.
So we have a whole progression plan, exit plan, transition plan. Maritza's gonna retain, remain in that office, also help train anybody else that needs it within the food because of her expertise. But it was really a promotion within the department, um, because we did not have the ability to go out and with everything being stood up so quickly, and having that person here that you identify that knows the town, knows the problems, knows how to do it, it was just a natural fit.
Yeah, great, yeah, and like Councilor Dow had said before, that's, it's great that you stepped up to apply for this and make it all work. Um, does anybody else have any questions, we've kinda hashed out the job.
Well, I mean, all I'll say, I mean, you pretty much answered any questions that I had, I mean, I was gonna ask you why you felt that she was a person for this job, and you, you've sort of answered all that. Her qualifications.
Yeah, absolutely, I mean, there's no doubt she is well qualified for the position. She has worked very closely with Anna, Anna's gonna continue to work with us perhaps one day a week right now in the transition to help us, uh, continue the transition for the, uh, to go to the curbside, so we value that opinion, so.
Okay.
Um, just like everything else, one, we know how hard it is to recruit, but why go out and recruit when somebody has all that institutional knowledge and is able to just step right in and continue to march forward.
All right, thank you.
Councilor.
Maritza's here.
Just like the comment, Maritza, uh, fantastic appointment, uh, but a job well done by H R and the Town Manager. Not too long ago, this would have turned into a disaster. Now, all of a sudden, people inside the system are important, they are, you know, able to transfer to positions, you have an H R department that thoroughly coaches the bases going in, you have a Town Manager that knows the makeup of the town, it's a successful chemistry that's working very well with Southbridge First Agenda, and I think, again, councilors that were going forward, it wasn't not too long ago, I H R department would have turned this into a disaster, and I think, you know, there's some kudos for H R at the same time, thank you very much.
Well said.
Yes, absolutely, well said. Um, I mean, Maritza, you don't have to say anything, if you'd like to. Would you like, would you like to say anything, Maritza?
She wouldn't stop if she stopped.
Okay, um, if, if nobody has anything else, uh, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present.
Thank you.
I'll get recommendation to council for the next meeting. Okay, so finally, we have agenda item number eight, review, discuss zoning bylaws and the next steps to address possible revisions and updates. Um, I don't think this technically even needs a motion in the second.
No, no, this was just, I, I put this on the agenda, I know you were away, I added this after I already sent you the agenda.
No, it's.
We've had a lot of conversations, um, throughout Town Hall with, um, Ken Colmier, who's the planner, with Chairman of, of Council, with other councilors, with our inspections Department, uh, or the, yeah, uh, well, Building Inspector's Department, our Building Commissioner, Attorney Caprera, and other residents throughout town that we really need to take a look at our current zoning. So it was really, uh, uh, this was the kickoff point to say, uh, let's work together with, uh, uh, zoning, planning, building, to come up with review of the zoning bylaws to address some, um, concerns that we have, I guess. One of the things is, when we look at, today we had a dentist that's trying to get it onto Central Street. They have to go to the planning board to get a special permit because it's in the central core, right? So that's one example, well, why would you have to do that because it's, you know, a special permit? Uh, with talking to, uh, Ms. Dean, um, we have the central core, also we have the dentist in the central core, which, okay, now there's a, uh, on Crane Street, on the backside of Crane Street, in the lower area, there's been a couple different businesses that have may have wanted to situate there, but because of the zoning that's in the central core, it's either not allowed or things like that. We have, uh, so it's throughout town, we don't have any, we've had people come in and wanna do a brewery. We have nothing in our zoning that says we allow breweries anywhere in the Town of Southbridge. And because it's not in any schedule, you can't put it anywhere, so we have to really take a look at that. We worked with the Mass, well, we worked with, uh, well, pegged aggressively with Franklin Realty, as we know, the Municipal Police Training Council.
No.
The Municipal Police Training Council was located at, uh, down at the Innovation Center, right? Southbridge Innovation Center, as that's called, the Franklin Properties. Um, they were going out for a request for proposals to possibly leave. We wanted to try to retain them in the Town of Southbridge, which Chip had, Chip, no one had the training space within, that was already built out, but there was also a provision that, uh, for a firing range. We have nothing in our zoning that allows firing ranges, but we had to look at, uh, through possible exemptions to do, uh, like educational or anything, so it's just complicated things like that. Then it comes up that there was a private business in town, um, that wanted to build out a indoor firing range, which is a safe use, but we don't allow it anywhere. So I think that's why, this is the kickoff minute to really say, uh, for that. Then we take a look at blighted buildings. And if we tear down a blighted building, uh, that's in a zoned area, say a residential area, but it's a six family, it's on a smaller piece of property, we tear down a six family, because of the size of that property, we're not allowed to build anything on it, right? But if that building were to burn down, unfortunately, uh, you'd have two years to rebuild whatever you wanted to build there. So it doesn't make sense.
Correct.
Right, so we have a ton of parcels throughout town that we own, that the town owns, that are smaller parcels that you can't build on. So wouldn't it make sense to say, some of those parcels, to say, say it was a, a, a three, a four, or four family, six family, that you say, okay, you could build a two family there, now instead of having this vacant lot that's not really generating any tax revenue, now you can put something there and put it back on the tax rolls. So that's what we're looking at, that's what we're trying to accomplish, and I think, uh, there's a whole host of other things, people wanna build mini homes, there's, there's a lot of things that need to be looked at, so this was more or less, bring it to the table, it would, whatever would come out would come through zoning, community, collectively, to come up with a sensible move it forward, so that's where it's at.
Okay, correct, I'm gonna start with, uh, Chairman Lazo, I know you had your hand up.
I'm gonna piggyback what Jack did, 'cause I was in the boardroom with him on these discussions. Attorney Caprero wanted to rejoin the team, uh, and cannot believe the change, 'cause he, he left at one point, of, uh, the talk in the room. The talk in the room is pro-business, Southbridge First, activating lots, uh, buttered auctions, a lot of creative stuff. We sat here with some integrated bylaws, stopping progress. Now, all of a sudden, you have councilors, and you got managers, and you even got the attorney all excited, that we wanna move forward and get all these things going, and it's better for the town, it's better for the neighborhoods. Uh, the blight that we deal with has been sitting on the back burner, now all of a sudden it's on the front burner. I think, uh, with the Town Manager in place, Council, the Department Heads, I think we got the, the circuit working. The only thing is, the bylaws stagger us. The downtown area, if people wanna come into town, we need a more welcoming bylaw with some of the businesses. I mean, really, this is a day of glories, we don't have the bylaws, you can have one. So I think we need to open up the doors, we need to open up the bylaws, that's the Committee of General Government. And I know that we have a planning board, and, and we work with them, but Council has the ultimate say on, uh, the confirmation of this stuff. And I think we gotta go full steam ahead while, you know, the iron's hot.
I agree, and before I go into more discussion, I just wanted to piggyback off the manager and the chairman. Anything we can do to make the Southbridge more pro-business. At the end of the day, welcome people in, they have businesses here, the taxes go down for everybody, and we have better services for less money, and it's just a great thing, and the town becomes the all-American city that we all remember. And, uh, yeah, so I, I know there's no documentation here, but we, we should absolutely get the ball rolling as quickly as possible to come up with some literature that, uh, we can, you know, vet, vet some more. Uh, but since it's an open discussion, we have a few minutes, if anybody wanted to. Uh, Shenyurt, right, Councilor Shenyurt.
Are we going to look beyond the bylaws, like licensing and permitting, or, or just for example, common pick license? We, we had some discussion about this, and you couldn't find why we have to have a public hearing on the common pick license. So if we can look, not just the zoning bylaws, but the licensing and permitting that may fall within those bylaws, I'm not sure, I haven't looked at them fully, but if we could look into those to make that simpler for the businesses, because when the place that, where Mario's restaurant was, the Chinese, I mean, the Mexican opened up, he had to go for a, a hearing, and nobody knew why, 'cause there's nothing there, so if we could, uh, look at the whole picture.
Totally.
No, we'll take a look at everything through the whole open gov permitting process. Today, we had, um, we're addressing the Lower West Street, the wall that collapsed, and the contractor that came in, when we talked about, hey, you can apply for your furthering permit, his first thing goes, do you do electric permitting? You know, so you know that's the way with the future, so we have to take a look at, comprehensive look at every way where we do business in town to make it as easy, but within the laws and regulations.
Anybody else? Citizen Member Kelly?
Would you? Um, yeah, I, I think it'd be a good idea to take a look at these, I think the, 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 the approach really should be with, with zoning in general, I'm just making some general comments. Uh, the default should be is permitted, unless there's a good reason not to permit it. Um, and perhaps I'm, I'm not, I honestly haven't read through the, through the zoning bylaws, so I'm not sure how they're written. They, it sounds like they're very restrictive, and that they're written in, in such a way as to make it, it's not allowed unless it says it here in the, in the bylaws, where I think that the, the exact opposite should be. The approach, where it's allowed unless we've determined, though the town's determined that there's a good reason not to allow it. Um, so I, I think it'd be a great idea to take a look at these zoning, the zoning, uh, bylaws. Uh, if, you know, we need to get more business in this town, we need to have a, a pro-business approach, so I'd be all in favor of taking a look, certainly.
That was well said, yep.
Uh, Threu too. Citizen Member Kelly, you're exactly right, so the, uh, planning board and zoning boards had, uh, cooperative meeting with our legal counsel, and that was the exact point that she made. Our zoning is restrictive zoning. If it doesn't say it anywhere, then it's not allowed. So that's what makes it hard, so to your point is well taken, that is exactly what I think we wanna flip it to, that, you know, unless there's a reason not to, you, you allow it, so that, that, that is the exact on point, what it is.
It's like guilty until proven innocent, it's backwards.
And I, and I think, I was on council, uh, Council Daniel was on council when we did the zoning bylaws and passed those zoning bylaws. Um, I think what you found, what I'm hearing, I think, um, the Town Planner, Ken Colmier, said this to me, he wasn't here when we did that one, it was Eric. Uh, but he said, we, it was really a cookie cutter approach, you know, that the consultant they had is one that does it in all these towns, and it's kinda cookie cutter, and they try to make it to fit, and we really should have a, a zoning that's right for Southbridge, not just a cookie cutter that, because it's good in one town, doesn't mean it's great for our town.
Right. Councilor Dow.
Thank you, Chair Threu. Uh, I am, it's very good idea, especially when you have a zone and say, general zone or different zone, and you still have to go for special payment, I, what's the point to have a, a certain area, it's zoned already for a certain thing, and you still have to go in front of the planning board, or different, uh, you know, a board to get an approval to be able to open a business. So I agree with you, that's a good, good move.
Councilor Marchetti.
Thank you, Mister Chairman Threu. Um, I think we, we spent like fifty thousand dollars on that zoning study and plan. Um, the only, the only thing is that I, I just asked that you be careful on this, because we keep making changes to it. A lot of times, the, um, the zoning laws aren't even enforced. And certainly, where I live, I live in a single-family residential neighborhood, and I, there's a lot of people in that neighborhood that want to start auto repair shops and, and, um, car transportation services, and it's like, oh, there's just so much that I wanna see businesses come here, but there's a place for the business, and it's not everywhere in town.
Absolutely.
So I just want you to be careful with that, I don't understand why a dentist can't come downtown, there's a dentist downtown already, so.
Well, that, that's the point.
Yeah.
That was the point. Why if a dentist ac, across the street is allowed, why does a new dentist have to go through a special? That was the point, why if a dentist ac- across the street is allowed, why does a new dentist have to go through a special permit? To open the same practice, that doesn't, those are the type of things that I, I, I am absolutely a hundred percent, I think, the majority of us would be, it has to be sensible zoning. So, uh, yes, you, you don't want it, you know, things in certain areas, but you also wanna allow it so that you can do it in certain zones. So I think down in your neighborhood, there's a garage down there that they wanna put certain things in, but that's a commercial building that was once commercial. That will never be anything else but, but commercial, but nothing else is allowed to go back in there, so that makes it difficult, so. I, I, you're right, it, it has to be, you don't wanna just have an open blank, you wanna, but you wanna make it so that it makes sense.
I agree.
Um, Councilor Dow and Councilor.
Thank you, Chair Trujo, uh, to Councilor McHale, and this is why we should look at the bylaw, because like you say, it, uh. Some area is not zoning, but if they go in front of their planning board, they approve them, they can build. You know, and you go to general zone where you allow, and they don't let them, what do they do? They go somewhere else, so that's why I think we should look at it and. Some, some, uh, a power, certain board have it, they're kinda more political and controlling, I think it should be zoning general, it should be go to the building department. He term, he, he will decide, you know, if that business will go there or not, you know, it should be for the building department, not the, not the different zone and they have no clue. What kind of business is gonna go or whatever, you know?
Okay, Councilor Lazo.
I think, I think we have to put it proper perspective, Mike, you're right, the reason why zoning was, was invented. Was to keep your residential area sacred and to make your, your, your working districts, business, heavy industrial zone and things like that. But what's happened in Southbridge is, past planning boards or whatever, that restricted, 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 I go to a planning board meeting and I said. Well, they wanna put apartments in a particular building on one side of town, I go, in an industrial area, apartments don't want that. But I said, well, it was told to me that, well, nobody wants to build on multi-levels of a factory, they all want one level factory. Then I go to Weir Mass, and all their mills, four floors high, are loaded with businesses, banks, all types of things. I go to Morgan, same thing, old brick buildings, all businesses, you have to maintain that, but take the handcuffs off those areas. Where they can put those businesses in, the restaurants, the common vics, you're one hundred percent right, I'm with you, as far as a neighborhood like yours. Problem comes in, home occupancy, cause there are people that work from home and maybe you have to take a look at that to, get a little more restrictive to keep it residential. But we need to look at it all.
Thank you, uh, Councilor Shenier.
I think it's important, I was sitting in on a planning board meeting when the town attorney came to address. Inadequacies that were taking place at the planning board, so along with zoning changes and redoing of things, I think it's important that the zoning boards. All the, the boards, zoning board, the planning board, even the building inspector, become aware of things, cause they, they. There's four exemptions, they don't even have to go to the planning board, and our planning board has made these people go to planning board, educational, I think religion, childcare and healthcare.
Government. Government. Government.
Government's altogether separate, they don't have to go, but they made these people go through the planning board that they didn't have to go, so it's important that we change the. And make the changes to the zoning, but also educate the people that are gonna enforce them, because down at D A O, for instance, it was learned that. Eric, our town planner, wrote off and signatured off saying it was okay to make changes down there, when he didn't have the authority to do that, it was only the zoning board or his agent that had to do that. And things got, weren't completed down there because nobody knew what they were understanding on what their responsibility was.
Councilor Lazo.
Just a quick follow-up, revolving door, any inspections to buy in and stuff like that, and the managers see, and various other things. When we talk about stability, Maritza's appointment, she has a history, she knows what's going on, she's staying here. You invest in that person, and she will always enforce it, cause she's got all of the background, the revolving door, when we do this, uh, you know, hiring in and out and. Local preference and all that, you need standing following those positions, and that's the main thing that's created a lot of bias and loss in mind, so.
So, just, as a, just so we can finish, uh, I work with different parties to come up with a weapon plan, is to help them build up, starting this process.
Great.
Great, and how it comes out of the job now.
I think it's very important, I think we've all said that too, so this is, this is good, we, Councilor Dow.
Thank you, Chair Trujo, and also, I don't know if we can keep it in mind, change, uh. It, it's something here, the law's saying, like, the home business, whatever, they can get a dealer license for a home. To sell cars and, and, and special permit given to put them in the, in the garage, I mean, it's gonna make some common sense somewhere, you know, so, thank you.
Great, well, uh, I guess that's it for the discussion there, um, and agenda number nine is adjournment. All was in favor?
Thank you.
Opposed, thanks, everybody.